Good evening, everyone. Welcome to tonight's study session for the city of Casa Grande. It is six o'clock. Mr. Rains, you want to introduce the first part of the program?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, our first presentation this evening is an update by our Census 2020 representative. And I know that everybody followed this particular project very intently, and Maria wants to just speak a little bit about the cooperation and coordination of our 2020 census. And so I'll hand it over to her. She's got a short presentation.
Thank you, Larry.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Good evening. My name is Maria Vianney Cárdenas. I'm the U.S. Census Bureau Representative for all Southern Arizona, actually ten counties now. But I'm here to give you an update and to say thank you to the city of Casa Grande for the effort and support in making sure your residents get count on the 2020 census. We did have, in face, many challenges like everyone else, but us was very historical. But, you know, we did it. We finished on October 15, and we're still doing our job. So I hope I can know how to work this. Bear with me. This is the agenda. I'm going to give you the 2020 Census National Recap, the regional, which covers 12 states. Our regional office is in Denver, Colorado. I'm also going to talk to you about what's next in 2021, what are we doing? And then one of the newest services that we able to provide to local government in our region is the Census Data Services. It's something new that we do have kind of like a college/university now in our system, and local governments will be available to learn from us. We can train you to learn how to utilize the data. A lot of people know there's data, but they don't know how to use it and how it will affect your housing, your education, and your impact specifically for COVID-19. So that's a great tool that we have new for you, and it's great. I will be contacting you guys and see if you guys are interested. I'm city manager, and you can, you know, train your staff specifically when you need grants and, you know, money for your education. So the national self-response rate is 67%. We finished with 67%. Our projected self-response, our own projected, was 65.6. The response rate in 2010 was 66.5. So we overpassed our own projected self-response. When we say self-response, it's meaning people doing it on their own, doing it on paper, doing it by phone, or doing it by online. It was the first time in the history of the census that we, people were able to do it online. It took about five to nine minutes for households to complete the census, and we didn't have no problems with the data, collecting the data from the internet. People, it was easier and preferred for them to respond online, and we know why, because of the pandemic. So it was perfect. We already had that in place, so we didn't know the pandemic was coming. But we were able to collect 79.86% from internet. So if you see those numbers, you know, people were doing it from the comfort of their home. The non-response follow-up, actually, the city of Casa Grande hosts, I would say, 357 census workers were staying here in the city of Casa Grande, your hotels, for two months and a half. So all of them, they were paid by the Census Bureau to be here in Pinot County, doing the non-response follow-up, meaning knocking on doors when people were not answering the questionnaire online, on paper, or by phone. So in 2010, 47.2 million addresses were counted in 69 days. In 2020, we did 64 million counted in 60-day period. By October 15, all Pinot County are in records. The home addresses were counted 100%. The group quarter facilities, meaning hospitals, jails, places where people were staying with the pre-arranged stay. If you see the blue bar, it's 2020, and the gray one is 2010. So we did quite a few more than 2010. The targeted shelter outdoor locations, people leaving in their car, outside of Walmart, under the bridges, in the park, we did 37,000 of those locations, and this is nationwide. So the service base enumeration, shelters, soup kitchens, we went over there. 53,000 of those locations were counted under the group quarters program. So we also have 313 partnership specialists like me, working through the whole 12 states, and including tribal and all media. We had 48,439 enumerators, and like I said before, 357 were located specifically for Pinot County, staying in Casa Grande. The area census offices, we had 50. The one covering Pinot County, it was located in Tucson, Arizona. And we had 67, 619 partners like you, helping us to motivate and educate the community about the importance of the census. We had a Complete Count Committee, like, we had one here in Casa Grande. 1,261, including 11 states Complete Count Committees, which Arizona had one. So this is the rate. Arizona, we finished 32, with 64.1% of self-response. And I wanted to put this graphic so you see the difference between 2010 and 2020, and for all, you know, the locations of your interest. So Casa Grande, in 2010, did 63.2%. In 2020, we only increased 0.5%. We were hoping that it was going to be better than that, but again, you know, we faced so many challenges and people leaving towns before, you know, we started doing the census, so it make a lot of difference. So this is the census track. The brownish color is the highest, non-self-response. The darker blue is the highest self-response. So you know your city. Those zip codes are the ones that respond better. And the 65194, which is part of Casa Grande, I believe, in some of the county, that was in the 30%. So what is next? So guess what? We're having April 30. As for the constitution and now the second order, we have to release our counts on April 30 of 2021. That's for the state counts, for the apportionment. For the redistricting, it will be available in 2021. We just got a press release earlier today, and I'm okay to announce it. They were releasing these counts on September 30 of 2021 for that redistricting. Right now, we're doing a post-numeration survey. We asking and calling people what happened to the census, how do you feel it worked? You know, is the internet something that you would like to see in the future? This one would tell us and produce the over count and the under count. So this is a great survey that we're collecting, all the way from now to October 2021. The American Community Survey, the five-year period, it was released on December 10 of 2020, and it's great data information that I mentioned before, that I'm able to help you to navigate on it for your different programs. This is the top five household surveys that we do. A lot of people tells me why the census is still here. Well, guess what? We do the 2020 census every 10 years, but we do different surveys every single month. The Decennial Census is counting how many people living in your house, who are they, but the American Community Survey and all of these surveys, it tells you the story. Who are those people? What type of education, income, household? I mean, it has so much information. So if they ask you, why the census is still calling me or sending me surveys? It's because we do 110 surveys every month, in a different topics, in a different scenarios that we need to put together. So this is the program that we're implementing now, and it's training you how to navigate in the data program, and this is a great opportunity. If you guys are interested, I will send you the information, and let me know if you guys want to do that. So we're here just to say thank you. The participation from all of you guys make this 2020 census historical more than monumental. And it was trusted voices like yours and, you know, the schools and different organizations and nonprofit organizations in your city, they were part of our Complete Count Committee. They help us shape the future of your community for the next 10 years. People tell us, oh, we were helping you, and we're like, yeah, you were helping us, but you were helping the city of Casa Grande. So they make sure that what type of population you guys have. So this is, I just wanted to share a little bit of the feedback. When we were at Walmart, doing the mobile questionnaire assistance with people, people were responding. I was very impressed that on one day, we fill out 37 questionnaires just in an hour and a half. So it was great. So the Census Bureau is sending you this gold certificate to the city of Casa Grande for being a member of the 2020 Census Community Partnership and Engagement Program, and like I said before, making us have a successful census. So it's here. So I would like to give it to you guys, and this is coming from our national office, the Census Bureau. Some organizations were classified under gold, silver, and bronze, but the city of Casa Grande earned the gold one. We, you guys did work very hard. So Blanca, are you able to do some remarks before we finish?
Well, we wanted to thank the census for including us in their partnership, number one. Number two, we really want to thank the city of Casa Grande. It was really your support, your financial support was an immense help to the success of the census this past year. The schools were also a great partner, APS. All the chamber, I can go on. I'm sorry, I don't have the list with me. But I just want to make sure that the city, you mayor, council, we're just so grateful for the support that you offer the committee, particularly the financial support for the banners, to make sure that there was awareness. And thank you, Maria, for coming and meeting with us every month and for guiding us through the process. Thank you so, so much. Thank you.
Can we get a picture maybe with the plaque?
Sure. And before I forget, the self-response I give you for the city of Casa Grande doesn't mean it was the final count. The final count was 99.8% for Pinot County, and the other percentage, it was done by the enumerators. Okay?
And just to add to that, Maria was a workhorse. She drove us very hard. And between Blanca and Ralph Verella, they were a great team, so thank you, guys.
And Mayor, if I may, can I make a couple comments? And Maria, again, I just wanted to thank you for just always being there. I know when we had questions, you were always there. And of course, Ralph and Blanca, you guys stepped up again, and we really, really appreciate it. No one else was raising their hand, and you guys offered to chair that committee, and it was, it was a good, you know, well-managed and coordinated effort by all, especially the school districts. Like you said, they were critical in this. Unfortunately, COVID didn't, we didn't expect it, but, you know, we just kind of plugged along. And finally, I wanted to thank Latonya. She was instrumental with the city and on the committee, making sure we had all the, you know, banners and all the print materials and everything. So she's not here, but she's really deserves that gold, that gold certificate, because she really represented and helped the city so much. So Larry, if you can make sure you send that information to her.
And Mayor, if I could say, I just, and I don't know if Blanca and Maria know this, but, you know, you've mentioned the banners that were great additions. I saw them all over town. And in fact, when we extended the census, I had several teachers, and I know there's one in Stanfield, and I believe one in Casa Grande, that requested if they could steal those when the census was over, because they actually are refurbishing those and putting those in their rooms, and because of the pictures of the kids and the, you know, and the different uniforms and stuff. And so some of those have been already recycled, so it was great.
Yeah, thank you, Maria. All right. Larry, next on the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the next item we have is a presentation on the Comp and Class Study that staff has been working on for the year. And I'm going to ask Mr. Barber to come up and give a bit of a overview before he hands the baton to our consultant, Matt Weatherly. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Mayor McFarlane, members of the council, we are indeed pleased this evening to be able to bring you a report on our employee classification and compensation study that's been underway for the last number of months. I think in our budget workshop last year, we talked to you about the planning efforts of getting underway and how important it was for us to have an outside look periodically from an independent consultant to come in and look at the issue of classification of our employees, and related compensation, and also a benefit component. And as you know, all of our city employees are assigned to position classification, police officer, secretary, and what have you. And each one of those classifications is in turn assigned to a pay range, a range in our pay plan. And our strategy in terms of pay competitiveness is to compare our midpoint with midpoints of those cities that we compare ourselves with. And the very first step in getting underway was to bring a representative group of comparators, 17 cities in the county that we would compare ourselves with, and get reaffirmation from you all about the legitimacy of those. We wanted to make sure that you were comfortable with those comparators. And so you affirmed that, and so we had that list ready to go when we issued our RFP for consulting services. And we were able to secure a public sector personnel consultant who does a lot of Arizona work and in fact, work with us in our last study. And you have to go back to 2008 is the last time that we did an outside compensation and classification study. That is not to say that we didn't maintain our system in subsequent years, but there were a lot of things that happened after 2008. And even several years ago, an RFP was issued for a study, but we were able to move ahead with it based on a number of issues that I'm guessing, based on a number of issues I wasn't here at the time. And so we were able to launch the study, and the first part of that is classification. All of our positions have a position description. The classifications have a position description that provides the essential functions of each of the positions, minimum qualifications, education, and those kinds of things. And so the first step was to do, talk about classification, and from that flowed the compensation side. So we had all of our position descriptions currently posted up on a website. We gave our employees access to those and asked them to review. For those that didn't think they were close, we provided them the opportunity to fill out what's called a position description questionnaire. It's about a 12- or 14-page document that's very basic. This is what I do. And several employees did take advantage of that. Once our employees had the opportunity to look, we asked them to funnel their work through their department director, their supervisor, before it came to us and to our consultant. Our consultant then did his work with those, with the work that we got from our employees, and put those back up. And then we gave our supervisors, our department directors, if you will, an opportunity for a final review, and then finalized all of that. And so our position descriptions, we believe, are up to date, and they're accurate. And then turned attention to the compensation side. And as Matt will be telling you in a moment, the data is more readily available out there today than ever before because of technology. And so we have about 140 position classifications in this city, different position classifications. And our goal this time around was to compare, or benchmark is the term, as many of those classifications as we possibly could with our comparators, our 17 cities in Pinot County. And we were very fortunate to be able to do 94 or so of those and get actual data, which we felt really good about. And so all of the data was brought forward. Matt's going to talk to you a little bit about trending also. We trended the data because we're looking at it today, and we're not going to be reviewing again until the spring of 2022. So we want to make sure we don't fall behind. And so that data was trended. All of that came together and produced a report that you have before us this evening. Matt has a short slide presentation. He'll stand to answer any questions that you have, and then I'll come back up also. One question I wanted to answer, even though it hasn't been asked yet, is why now? Our original goal, our hope, was that we would be able to get the study completed and bring it to you for the possibility of implementation on January 1st. We wanted to do this apart from the regular budget process so that we could bring very specific focus to the issue of employee compensation and benefits. That's still in our mind now that we're bringing it to you with the opportunity or the possibility of implementing this for the pay period coming up on April 1st. That way, it would be fully in place as we got into the meat of our budget process. So we're really able to look at this issue in and of itself as we move into the budget process. With that, I'd like to introduce Matt Weatherly. He represents Public Sector Personnel Consultants, and he has a presentation.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Appreciate the opportunity to get out of the house and come and visit, and hopefully either answer or artfully dodge any question that you might have. Home game for me, I didn't have to go through airport security to come see you, just got to drive from the valley. So we do probably 40 or 50 studies throughout the United States every year. Every one of them is a little bit different. We walk into history, certainly everywhere that we go. So definitely welcome both the opportunity to work with your staff again, as well as be here this evening. What I prepared will go fairly quickly. Scott touched on some very critical points, so I'll have a little bit more detail to fill in on each of those and a little bit of our methodology, as well as a high-level set of our findings. We did invite the employees to review their position descriptions and/or complete a job questionnaire. We have completed now the compensation and benefits survey. We're dusting up kind of the last of the benefits notes on some leave benefits for your shift personnel, but I'm happy to say that that's awfully close. And then we have reviewed the placement of all jobs onto your pay grade table. Quick notes on classification, don't want to glaze over that because it is a very critical element on which we're building a compensation discussion. Once we identify what the jobs are, we want to identify what they're worth. There's about 140 different jobs. We're proposing a few reclassifications and a few new job descriptions or a few new position descriptions to best reflect the work that's currently being performed today. Those have been fairly well-managed, I think, in the recent years, but there was an opportunity for a little bit of movement, certainly a little bit of updating and refreshing on some of the language, and the employees played a critical role in giving us some actual job duties that either were missing from those position descriptions. Some of them had a date stamp, you know, that does go back eight or 10 years. So it was a great opportunity to do that. So we've reviewed all of that information and then drafted updated position descriptions. The salary survey, as Mr. Barber mentioned, the day-one conversation always involves the where do we get people from, where do we lose people to, who has jobs like ours? So this list should be fairly familiar to all of you, but it is indeed kind of the green light that we need to go collect data. And so we engage in good conversation with each of these agencies. We collect their job descriptions, their benefits data, their salary structures, their pay ranges, their organization charts, in some instances, their budget documents, to kind of dig in and make sure that we're doing an apples-to-apples comparison of as many jobs as possible. I do have some salary survey illustrations that kind of reinforce some of the summary data that appears in your draft document there that's in front of you. But to give you an idea of what a benchmark job looks like, I have a few illustrations of our survey work. What we're showing here is a comparison on paper, really. We're comparing job for job, based on job duties, the structure and the pay range that's afforded to like jobs in those comparator agencies. Now, not every agency has every one of these jobs. This particular position, and most positions, we compare midpoint to midpoint. So when I say midpoint to midpoint, the goal is kind of twofold. One, I want to make sure that your structure is competitive, and when I look from agency to agency, the width of some of the pay ranges and pay grades that are afforded to different jobs varies depending on the job that we're talking about. This particular benchmark is an example of one of about 90 different jobs that we were able to survey. This one has both public sector as well as private sector data, so that bottom note there, ERI, that's Economic Research Institute. That's a published salary survey that we subscribe to that gives us really good insight into the private sector for like jobs. Now, there's an abundance of portability for some of your jobs, but not all of your jobs into the private sector. But office and clerical, labor and trades, professional and technical positions, we attempted to include both public sector as well as private sector data to answer two main questions when we do the survey. First, how do we look? How are we doing compared to those that we're competing with? Right behind that is where do we want to be? Where do we need to be in order to recruit and in order to retain? In the upper right-hand corner, you'll notice on paper anyway, our midpoint for this particular position is about 7% behind market. The other examples that I have vary. An example of a professional position, accountant, about 3% off that range midpoint. Again, you can see probably about 15, 16 data points there. Police officer, we like to also expand our public safety positions and compare at entry and compare at top out. Some of your competitors have a very formal placement guide, as well as very specific step structures. You have a step structure for all of your jobs, but there's sometimes a sensitivity to being very competitive at entry, as well as competitive at top out. And then salary administration, how long does it take me to top out? How do I move through that scale? So we do a little bit additional analysis, kind of for the summary purposes. I just wanted to show a couple of examples of the data that sits behind some of our findings and recommendations.
So Matt, if I look at that, I'm sorry for interrupting. So if I'm looking at the police officer, that 64177, is that Casa Grande?
No, actually, I realize that I have a column that's hidden. If I look at your current at the midpoint, let me pull that up real quick. I apologize. It'll be in that summary document as well in the backup.
So, because I don't see us on there.
No, you're right. I have a column hidden in my illustration that I didn't mean to hide.
So 2,500 under that 6,400 midpoint then?
Yes.
Okay, so I can do the math.
Yeah, no, for sure. Your midpoint, and it's really at step six-ish, I think, is about 62-something. Yeah, 61.6.
Okay. So just subtract that variance then off of that number.
Yes.
Okay. That'll work. Thank you.
No, thank you. I realize that, that I'm not showing your current, you know, midpoints in here. I usually have a bunch more columns in here, and I was trying to get them to fit onto the presentation. I apologize for that. Firefighter, you know, a little bit more competitive, but certainly, you know, a minor variance there. Usually, we use plus or minus 5% to define competitive. We were able to benchmark almost 100 positions, and I say that there's probably about 25 that fell on the cutting room floor. We kind of used a cutoff of about seven data points to say, all right, is this sample size large enough for me to kind of pick a hill to die on? And that was how do we look up against the market? We wanted to see a big enough sample size to be really comfortable with our overall kind of findings here. Roughly, it's about a 70/30 split. If I use plus or minus 5% to define competitive, about 70% of our jobs were surveying low. About 30% of our jobs were About 30% of our jobs were in pretty good shape. Now, pretty good shape, in part being relative, but if we use plus or minus 5%, give me a little bit of margin for error. The goal here is when we're done for all jobs to have a similar relationship to market. Currently, there might be some positions that are at 85 or 90% of market, other positions that are at 95 or 98% of market. And ideally, even if you can't, you know, eat that all at once, we want to try and get to as consistent of a spot as possible for all positions. If that's back to within 5% of market or back to within kind of an average of market. We also looked at benefits. That document is also, and it's stamped draft, but in the packet that you received, we looked at health insurance contributions, who pays what for family and for dependent coverages. Everything from retirement contributions to paid time off, ad pay, certification pay opportunities. Really similar to an audit, what you want to hear, you know, no major findings there. One positive note, I think there's some history to this one as well. But when I get to about 15 years with the city, my paid time off looks pretty good. Yeah, I'm a few days ahead of market average, which is a good thing. And again, there might be some history to that in terms of maybe there was a time where we either couldn't do an adjustment or we couldn't quite reach market with pay, but we wanted to get there and reward some longevity. So you look at that certainly as a positive, I think, without saying that we're underdoing it or overdoing it in any major component. Pay plan updating, we have modeled pay grades for all positions. That also appears in your draft document. I don't believe there is any action that's being requested this evening. But what we are doing is realigning in our modeling here, all positions to be back within 5% of market. What that occurs, that's a paper, right? So everything that's come out of my mouth, I think, up until right now has been a paper exercise. Comparing your structures, comparing job descriptions, modeling new pay grades. So what does it mean for the people? In this particular instance, what we are modeling and what we are providing to you ensures that if my pay grade moves, I move with it. So if I had attained step four or step five in my pay grade, but you move my pay grade, I'm going to get to return back to step four or step five in my new pay grade. So I'm going to realize the market adjustment that is intended for my position. That amounts to that cost there, just under 5% of base payroll in order to achieve that. Jobs need to move on the structure so the pay grades move. The individuals move with those grades and maintain their step. So that costing there, that's illustrated there, just under 5% of payroll, reflects a full market adjustment for the individuals that are impacted by those pay grades moving. Okay? That loosely as fast as I can talk gets us started. Are there questions? Are there comments or anything that we saw on the slides that we want to look a little bit deeper at?
Matt, I had one question. And when you do that comparison and you compare us to Avondale or something like that, is there a cost of living thought in there? In other words, you know, housing price here versus housing price in Avondale? I mean, how do you factor that in, I guess? I'm just trying to understand how to compare apples to apples, you know? Because a lot of times, you know, data is data and it's hard to sometimes compare an apple to an orange if you don't have, you know, a level playing field, if you will.
Yeah, no, I think historically, the intent has been that this list balances itself out with respect to size and cost of living. There are certainly some Pinellas County and some Pima County agencies in here that could swing it the other way, you know, I think as well. So the struggle that we have always had is attaining the cost of living versus the wage differential. Now that data exists. However, it's never one for one. Yeah, where if cost of living is higher, we move such and such wage lower by that amount and vice versa. And so we haven't fuzzied the math. We get asked to all the time because we do this work all over the United States. And it is absolutely a challenge. But I believe the historical intent of this list, both from a size, population, scope and cost of living, you know, when you look at it and you average them all out, it comes out.
But there's no factor you can factor in and say, okay, well, I know in Avondale, I'm going to pay a dollar, you know, 20 cents more a gallon for gasoline. I'm going to pay $100,000 more for a house, you know? So those factors, in my opinion, should weigh into it somehow. I don't know how you do it. I'm not suggesting I know how that's done, but I do know that in Pinellas County, I think, I believe that our cost of living is lower. And I'm not saying that we shouldn't raise the level of employee pay. I'm just trying to get my arms around it. That's all.
Yeah, absolutely. And I think there's plenty of data out there, you know, to support and bring back to you what those metrics would be and what those numbers, you know, would look like. I think the preparation that would be required would probably be also on the opposite end of the spectrum. Because you're not wrong. I think if you look at individual elements that either make up a CPI or a general cost of living, you know, there are some of these agencies that would, you know, not so much bring your numbers down as they would potentially bring them up. But if you were to apply those, we can very quickly bring that, you know, to you, you know, when you consider adoption and provide some staff recommendation. If that would certainly provide a comfort level, we would be able to weigh in on that and identify if that has an impact on the wage recommendation, you know, components individually. Very, very willing to do that.
Well, I think it'll be interesting to see it. I don't know that it would change the outcome, but I think, and I understand, we also want to make sure that our employees are compensated, you know, fairly and that we don't lose them to an Avondale, for example, right? So because Avondale's paying a police officer, you know, a thousand more dollars a month. So.
Maybe.
And that's kind of why we kind of, that's why as a city council, it's kind of why we've asked for some of this data. And as a city, we do it on a regular basis anyway. But I think it was also came out of the city council to ask our staff to take a look at compensation because we want to make sure we are competitive, right? Because we don't want to lose people to the valley. Especially as we grow, that's going to be more and more an issue for us. So just, those are just my thoughts. I'm kind of thinking out loud, but it's, it's not an easy decision because we have over 400 employees, right? So it's not like this is a small company. It's actually a pretty fair sized company. If you look at it from that perspective, and I think we need to, because we are competing with the valley. So, but I want, so anyway, I'm rambling, so I apologize. But go ahead.
What gets fascinating, I believe, is when you look at, and let's pick on Avondale for a minute, not directly, but indirectly. If you look at them in our data set, there will be instances where perhaps they're paying a little bit more than you. There'll be instances where perhaps they're already paying a little bit lower than you. So there's not always a direct correlation that perfectly makes sense. And I'm a data guy, so I'm looking for things to make sense. Where in some instances, if we say, hey, your cost of living is higher, I need to lower your number. And they're already lower than you, they're going to come down additional, right? I can normalize the other end where if they're consistently winning, you know, out of this list of 17, you know, agencies or 18 agencies, you know, I'm more concerned as a competitor for a Queen Creek. You know, their cost of living, their cost of housing is probably growing. Certainly as an agency, they're growing. They're coming online now with PD. And I would say out of the data set, they win. They win probably 75 per, maybe 80% of the fight, you know, out of your market data. But their cost of living may appear to be similar to yours or lower. That may not be the case.
It's not, by the way.
But, you know, I mean, you kind of get my point is by agency by agency, I can identify out of this list who's exceptionally competitive with their wages. Not so much turning a blind eye to the cost of living, but there are instances where the cost of living is lower and they're killing everybody on pay. And so it's an interesting balance. We don't have a Gilbert in here or a Chandler or a Mesa or a Tempe or a Scottsdale. They tend to want to constantly elbow each other out of the way to achieve those kind of top three in the valley. So you get a little bit of an echo effect. You know, I think Flagstaff springs out, you know, to me exceptionally high cost of living. Yeah, as a big Sky Conference or, you know, whatever they're in, we use them all the time when we're doing work in Jackson Hole, Wyoming and in Bozeman, Montana. And, you know, some of those places because their cost of living is about 20% higher than national average. So your point is well taken. And I'll be happy to share all of the research that we can do, you know, on your behalf to answer both the cost of living differential as well as the wage differential question.
Thank you.
Happy to do that.
Mr. Powell.
Yes, I've, just out of curiosity, how do city council members compare between cities as far as compensation?
As far as compensation, we were not asked to look at it, but I do have some of that data readily available because we just completed that for the city of Eloy. Council member, mayor, and then I think there were maybe some either questions around.
And I think Scott, you have some data on that as well, right? So Scott can give you that, Mr. Powell.
Yeah, I just have never heard a comparison and just curious, so.
I've seen it.
Have you? Was it good or bad?
That was a very technical response. No, I have that response in my head.
But he does, Scott's got that. Would you supply that to Mr. Powell, Scott? That sheet that you've given to me? Yeah, or give it to the council. That'd be fine. Thank you. Donna?
Just a comment. Thank you very much for the information. And as some, as a county employee, I went through similar several years ago with my staff. And it's always interesting to see where we belong. I'm really happy to see that our benefits are very competitive because that is important to people. And I understand what the mayor, you know, is referencing as far as, you know, the cost of living. But we are so close to the valley. And for us to not be competitive with the Avondales and even the Chancellors and those kinds, because of the fact that we lose good people. Because if they can make a thousand dollars more a month and it only costs them $200 in gas to drive up there, it makes sense for them to do that. So I guess for me, this is really good information. I'm a little bit surprised that, you know, how much under we are in our positions. But I think that we can't do anything about it if we don't know. And that is really important in that. So thank you.
Good point.
Is this being under pervasive or is it just strictly in certain areas?
I'm sorry?
Is, you say we're below the.
Well, in some of these, according to, you know, the information in Matt gave us.
Is it pervasive across the list of jobs or is it just in certain areas?
Well, what did you say, 70?
Yeah, 70%. It didn't discriminate, yeah, 7-0. 70% of your positions were more than 5% behind.
More than 5%.
Right.
It didn't discriminate with respect to, you know, pay rate. You know, for example, it wasn't limited to manager and above or entry level. You know, it bounces all over the place, job by job. The great thing is that if we use the same sample set for all positions, you get really good consistent results that make sense. That's important because I do have some clients that tend to compare their maintenance, you know, and trades and clerical folks to one group. And their managers and directors to a different group of cities and that sometimes gets a little bit, you know, noisy. So we have a nice consistent market, you know, model here. But it does, you know, the summary applies to all positions. It wasn't where there is a clear pattern around a certain type of position. I mean, anecdotally, you know, there's plenty of positions that we hear about everywhere that we go that are very difficult to recruit and very difficult to retain. I think post 2013 as well was when you saw the great majority of movement. So as things thawed out, you know, from the last, you know, go around of '08 to '12 difficulties, you started to see a COLA plus a step, a market plus a step, a merit plus a step. You saw a lot of growth from about 14 to 18, you know, to the tune of 3.5, 4% a year wage growth. And so you kept up with part of that. But certainly it had been a while since the structure had been looked at in this kind of holistic of a way.
Lisa?
And kind of piggyback on your, the whole cost of living thing, and I think that's important. I know you talk about the amount of positions that are under. But, you know, that cost of living, it's big. I know even with the private business, you know, we have a tough time with attorneys because we pay lower because our hourly rates are lower in the city of Casa Grande. So, you know, of course, there's a lot of businesses that face these challenges. So I don't think we automatically just go and go, you know, just go to the highest level or whatever. So that, that cost of living piece is critical. And it's not just the city of Casa Grande that faces those challenges. It's all over. So I'm curious where the county is, you know, and if they're at that same percentage. And, you know, I don't know if that's something that you can provide us, just to give us an idea, a reference of where they are.
We could do a couple of things. I think, given the presence of the data that we do have, you know, we can answer a couple of questions by comparator. We can stack up these comparators up against you one by one instead of job by job. We can look at each comparator by this particular market set. You know, to say, well, where does the county fall up against these 17 agencies or where does? And then fill in that blank. So we can inform that. I think that the other piece that, you know, you could, you know, kind of not so much, you know, digest or struggle with as at least help inform, because I think data does play a key role when you're, you know, talking about general fund and other funds that are impacted by wages because you're a service organization. I want to make sure that we get it right. You know, I want to make sure that you are comfortable with the data. Yeah, so certainly we can, we can help. I think we can provide, you know, some additional information by comparator, you know, for that next discussion.
And then one more thing, Matt. So after this is done, I think it's been, how many years since we had this? 10, over 10 years? We've had a study?
Yeah, 13.
13 years. So with this, will we be good for another 10 years? Or how often? Hopefully no, but how often?
Yeah, check in the magic ball. That's the challenge. We have trended and positioned your structure, you know, to account for the middle of '21 into '22 on purpose, right? I think that historically, there has been an application of either an aging to market data and/or an adjustment to the structure, a general adjustment to the structure. That remains appropriate. I'm getting worse and worse at maybe making estimates and prognostication given COVID. Because I have some markets right now that are doing 8 and 11% salary adjustments for some of their public safety positions and I can't get my head around that in 2020, 2021. That's offset, and I would never advocate like doing anything on the back of another group, right? So I'm trying to take this whole civilians war and everybody and reposition you at market. And I think that it's going to be appropriate to monitor these individual agencies. You kind of start dialing for dollars about March to say, hey, are you plugging anything in for your budget? Are you doing it to your structure? Are you providing it to the people? Are you doing both? Right? So generally, you know, I would say up until things maybe ran into the ditch a little bit last year, it was very common to see maybe a 2 or 2.5% adjustment to the entire structure as well as a budget for a step, right? So in some agencies, that might've been 2.5 and 2.5 or 2.5 and 3, or whatever that meant, agency by agency. Maybe it was a 2.5 to the structure and we budgeted for another 2% for merit. Yeah, that was very, very common up until then, right? So up until, you know, February, March, you know, of last year. And then things kind of hit the skids a little bit. We are noticing that in 2021 now, what really occurred for 2021 were at minimum for a lot of agencies, what were perceived to be the contractual obligations for public safety, right? So step increases were given. So at a minimum, you know, wages continued to grow at 2 or 2.5% pandemic aside. I think it remains to be seen what combination of structural movement and people movement will occur, you know, from this coming year and beyond. But I think as simple as asking these agencies what they're plugging into their budget for '22, for '23, right? That, it won't get you 10 years, right? However, if you adjust structures when market says so and you continue to move people, I'm a huge fan of continuing to budget for steps whenever you can do steps, right? I think the minute you stop or you can no longer afford to move people and then the structure lags behind, then it gets really expensive to move both again, right? So, yeah, definitely a course correction, definitely not an insignificant number, you know, that we're proposing here as far as dollars go and percentage of payroll. However, you know, if we can get to maintenance mode, that maintenance mode looks like a little bit of structural adjustment and continued step adjustments.
Matt, did you have a comment?
You know, it was just same thing you guys said, so I won't beat that point, but just, I mean, I'm no statistician. I didn't like that class too much, which is why I don't do that.
I have an ironic story for you.
But in my simple mind, you know, we have 10 cities on there and we can say, this one is plus three and this one's minus two for cost of living, you know? I mean, house, house price, you know, just basic stuff. So I'm not going to belabor the point, but that's very important to me.
Yeah, the wage differential is a different number. Traditionally, the lower and closer to minimum wage you are, the more impacted you see the wage based on the cost of living. So for example, an entry level, I'll pick a job, I don't think you have, a cafeteria worker. A cafeteria worker in Phoenix is going to be making 1215 an hour. A cafeteria worker in Los Angeles is going to be making $15 an hour. However, you know, that first line supervisor of those individuals are going to be paid much closer together. And the manager or the director over that food service business is going to be paid probably within 5% of one another, right? So that difference flattens out depending on the job that we're talking about. So I would say indirectly, the value of an accountant in your city or in Avondale or in Queen Creek, fairly comparable, right? Going to be a little bit noticeably different, if not considerably different for a laborer, for a parks maintenance. for a parks maintenance worker. That, that tends to have a little bit greater of a swing, you know, when we start to apply a wage differential.
Okay.
So, you know, I don't want the numbers to go all over the place, but if I can at a high level summarize to your edification, here's the cost of living differential for each, here's the wage differential for each, and I can answer those two both very quickly.
Bob?
Mayor? I just want to give kind of a counterpoint to having cost of living information as part of this process. I, I'd like to see it as well, but I think it's more of a, more of a chamber of commerce issue on cost of living being a little less here than it may be in some of those communities. I, I think the fact is that the methodology that's used by getting a variety of communities for us to compare ourselves to is valid. We're not going to be the top and we're not going to be the bottom, but we want to be somewhere in between. I, I'm afraid that it may send a, a poor message to our staff, to our employees, if we start throwing out there that, well, the reason we're not paying you this much is because the cost of living is lower down here. There, there's a lot of factors on why people live and work in, in Casa Grande, and I, I think that's a slippery slope to start figuring in cost of living into this process. I think it's good information to have and it's a good selling point to, to bring people to Casa Grande or to, to have them stay, but I, I disagree with it being included at some point with this, with this study.
I, I don't think anybody's discounting your, your report. I don't think anybody's discounted that. I think all, all, a couple of us were saying is that we'd like to see the data, that's all. And it's not, not that it needs to be rolled into your equation, but that, you know, it just, it's just another factor that I would like to see.
That was my only caution. I didn't want it to be part of this. I, I thought it would be sending a, a bad message.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, thank you, Matt.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Matt and his crew have done a great job for us, and just another landmark along the way, Casa Grande has a very long history of being competitive in terms of pay and benefits. And I think that the, the average tenure in our workforce, as, as, as shown by some of the retirements we've been seeing lately, I think speaks well of the idea that, that you all and your predecessors have committed to being competitive in terms of compensation and benefits for our employees. So we appreciate that and we appreciate your receiving the report this evening. We need a little direction coming back and whether, whether we're going to be able to move ahead with this for our plans, but I would defer to Larry for closing comments.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, again, I want to thank both Scott and Matt for the, for the job that they've done on this particular study. Obviously, a lot of data. Just a couple of points, and I know that we've made a number today. I, I just reemphasizing the fact that, at least from my perspective, there's a number of reasons that really have drove, driven us to the point where, where we're at from a, from a competitive standpoint. You know, part of the issue that I think that we deal with, and Matt touched on it very nicely, is that we haven't done general adjustments or anything like that for a couple of years now, and so we have been trying to fund the merit, as, as Matt had indicated. That's been something that we have focused on and something that we want to continue to focus on. Our plan from a staff's perspective, again, I know that Scott gave a bit of the overview, is to come back to the mayor and council. It sounds like we've got a little work that we need to do perhaps in advance of that to get, to perhaps look at this cost of living, so we'll, we'll have a better sense from Matt as to how long that may take. But, but ultimately, the plan would be that we would be coming back in March, sometime in March, for the mayor and council to have some level of consideration and implementation for this fiscal year. The, the council did approve as part of the budget process, the funding of this proposal starting in January. And so we'll, we'll do the work that the council's asked us to do this evening, and we will disseminate that and have something on an agenda here in, in the near term.
Hey, Larry, and I don't want to speak for everybody else, but from my perspective, I would suspect that you would come back with a plan, right? A plan in terms of how we would roll this in and that it wouldn't be, I wouldn't suspect, it wouldn't be all at once, right? It would be a, a process that we would go through into one year, two year, whatever it might be to try and bring these up, especially those that need to come up substantially. And I don't know the exact numbers, so.
Right.
I'm kind of speaking out of school there, but I just would anticipate that we would have a plan on how we could bring us up to that, that median bar.
Sure. And, and the, and the particular information that was disseminated tonight does do that for a year, obviously, for a, a complete fiscal, fiscal year. We had what I consider to be a very fruitful discussion this, this morning amongst the executive leadership team, at least in my mind, and I know that both Scott and Matt mentioned it tonight. For me, it's about reestablishing the foundation of the, of the plan that we once had and, and moving back into what I consider to be more of a long-term type of a maintenance. And I, I wish I would have used the word this morning, maintenance mode, Matt, that I think is a, is, is something that's a good definition of this. But Mayor, to your point, at least in my mind, this was going to be some level of a multi-year for some of the positions. There's some that we're going to be able to achieve with, with what's being recommended here tonight. There's others that we're likely going, as you can tell by the data, that we're still[1742.41]